Call this meeting to order, please rise for a flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Present?
Present.
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 Great, thank you. Welcome to the El Cajon Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on the City of El Cajon website. If you're joining us in person today, please wear a face covering when not speaking. Appeals of final decisions of the Planning Commission made this evening must be filed in writing with the city clerk before 5:00 PM Friday, June 28th, 2021, and must include the payment of a filing fee. If you wish to speak on either a non-agenda or agenda item tonight, please fill out the request to speak card located by the agenda and turn it into the secretary who will call you up to speak when the agenda item comes up for public comment. We ask that you give us your name spelling of your last name. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The display on the podium, as well as other monitors in the chamber, will show time counting down. At 30 seconds, the podium clock readout will turn red, signifying you have 30 seconds until the end of your time. Applicants and individuals representing groups of people may be allowed more time if appropriate. All public hearing comments should be addressed to me as the Chair of the Commission and not individual commissioners or to staff members. Please turn off all electronic devices if you have already not done so. Pursuant to City Council Resolution Number 114-79, a commissioner who has received evidence related to a matter before the Planning Commission, other than an unescorted view of the subject property, is required to disclose such information at the hearing. At this time, we will take comments from any member of the public on any item of business within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Under state law, no action can be taken on items brought forward under public comment, except to refer it to staff or administration or place it on a future agenda. If there's anyone who wishes to address the commission under public comment, please come forward. Any, do we still have people asking questions online as well? Okay, great, thank you. All right. At this time, we'll move to the consent calendar. A single motion will cover all items on the consent calendar. Does the commission wish to poll? Any items on the consent calendar?
No.
Okay, staff? Okay, great. A single motion will adopt all consent calendar items.
I move to adopt minutes.
Second?
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Circo, second by Commissioner Vaez, please vote. Or was that Commissioner Pollock-Rude that did that? I can't really tell with the face mask and the glass, I'll do the best I can. Second was made by Commissioner Pollock-Rude. All right. At this time, we will move to public hearing. The first item under public hearing is Agenda Item Number Two. It is the El Cajon Boulevard Town Homes. It is a request for 160 new condominium townhomes. Secret recommendation, subsequent activity under previous certified EIR. Staff's recommendation is approved. Staff?
Testing? Great. We'll try that again. So, good evening, Commissioners. Melissa Devine, the City of El Cajon Planning Manager, here to present on the El Cajon Boulevard Town Homes project. The applicant is City Ventures Home Building LLC, and Karen Alves is representing City Ventures tonight. The project before you is 116 condominium townhomes. These will be three-bedroom townhomes with attached two-car garages. And the project features recreational amenities, such as a pool and gathering space, as well as private yards and patios. This will be a market rate project, so for sale condominiums. And there will also be proposed street improvements, including street trees and frontage improvements on El Cajon Boulevard and South Johnson. And this will require the demolition of the existing commercial buildings that have historically been used for an auto dealership. The site is designated general commercial and zone for general commercial use. It is also within the Transit District Specific Plan and identified for planned uses of mixed use at 30 dwelling units per acre and commercial large-scale development. The project requires approval of a site development plan permit for the development of the residential units, as well as a tentative subdivision map for the subdivision of property into condominium units. This is an aerial image of the subject site at 300 El Cajon Boulevard. It's located between El Cajon Boulevard and South Johnson, south of West Main Street and north of where El Cajon Boulevard and Johnson intersect. It is approximately a little over five acres in size, and you can see the, there's multiple parcels that are outlined in white there. You can see some of the existing commercial buildings, as well as surface parking lots that currently occupy the site. And surrounding uses include a mix of residential types along Johnson Avenue to the west of the property, a mix of commercial uses such as auto dealerships to the east. And there's also a parking lot that was previously associated with the former VW Mossi auto dealership that's just immediately south, so shows up as a triangle there just below the property. North of that, there, north of the subject property, there is a auto repair business, as well as some contract construction services and a recycling center. Wanted to just take a moment here to talk a little bit about the Transit District Specific Plan and what that plan envisioned for this area. It is a plan for approximately 260 acres surrounding the El Cajon Transit Center, and it really planned to create a mixed-use district full of housing, commercial services, all connected by transit to El Cajon and the broader region. And there are significant public improvements that are planned in that area, some of which are already in the planning stages and will be underway soon. And the idea behind that was to pair private investment through new development with public investment through new public infrastructure to really revitalize that area and to increase the housing opportunities that will support transit ridership in that district. Two of the CIP projects that are in the planning stages are the El Cajon Roundabout Project, right there at El Cajon Boulevard and Johnson Avenue, as well as the Main Street-Green Street Project. And that will result in bicycle improvements and pedestrian improvements along West Main Street, and there's also planned improvements on Palm and Marshall, as well as El Cajon Boulevard. The plan also allows for a density bonus for projects that feature either development amenities or public benefits, and we'll get into that in a little bit more detail later on. This is the proposed site plan for the 116 townhomes that are arranged in 15 buildings that vary in size. And what this really does is it breaks up the massing of the project into these individual smaller buildings. And you'll see that the project site is accessed from a driveway on El Cajon Boulevard and on South Johnson, so two primary access points. The entrance on El Cajon Boulevard will be aligned with West Lexington, and a new left-hand turnpocket will be created out of that median area to ensure safe access. There are centrally located recreational amenities in the form of the pool, the event lawn, and the gathering space, as well as 23 visitor parking spaces in addition to the two-car garage that each unit features. And I would like to note, just in terms of setbacks, there is a required 10-foot setback along the interior property lines here, but the building is further set back where it is adjacent to the recycling center to provide further buffer. And there are landscape buffers that you'll see in the next slide that further provide that separation between the existing commercial uses and the new residents that will be living here. There are private patios where individual homeowners will be able to do their own improvements as well, personalize those spaces, and we'll have an additional two-foot-high screening fence on top of the six-foot-high masonry wall that will separate the residents from the adjacent commercial uses. This landscape plan shows that the site is quite heavily landscaped, there's over 70,000 square feet of landscape, as well as open space proposed. And you can see the street trees that are proposed along South Johnson Avenue and on El Cajon Boulevard that will continue the improvements that are currently planned associated with the Roundabout and Main Street. This is one of the elevations of the building, so there's two main color schemes, and it's really a contemporary style that's representative of what we're seeing in this area with some of the more recent projects, such as the Cornerstone Affordable Housing Project that's at Suntrain and Douglas, the BMW dealership that's just on the street. So we're seeing very clean lines, neutral colors, but also updated building materials with the hardy board siding, the brick veneer, the gray brick veneer, but also some warmer tones that you'll see with the railings, as well as the fencing. And then the, there's canopies above each individual entrance, as well as above the third-story windows. This is the second color scheme that's proposed, the other one being more of a blue, and then this one has a yellow theme as well. And you'll see those same features expressed. And I think it's important to note that the architecture is expressed on all four sides as well, and that it's really going to provide that strong residential edge that we're looking forward, are looking for in the Transit District to activate the street. So we know that it's important to have eyes on the street, to have people who are able to walk out their front door or look out a window and be monitoring what's going on at the street level. And so all of the units on El Cajon Boulevard and Johnson do face out towards the street and provide that residential edge. So this project has been determined to be a subsequent activity under the previously certified EIR that was prepared for the Transit District Specific Plan. There's a checklist that is completed for each project under a previously certified EIR where we determine that the project will comply with the mitigation measures in that EIR, and those mitigation measures, as applicable, have been made conditions of approval. And so we've incorporated that and complied with all requirements. So staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission is to adopt the next resolutions in order recommending City Council approval of the sequoia determination, the site development plan permit, and the tentative subdivision map, subject to conditions. And I'd like to note that the applicant is here and has prepared as well a presentation and has some additional project representatives that are available via phone to be called upon. Thank you.
Any questions at this time for staff? Yes, Commissioner Circo?
I was looking for the water plan, the runoff plan. I know a lot of newer developments have catch basins or some sort of, well, I guess it's a catch basin, whether that's near the sidewalk or in a central area, and I didn't see that in this plan.
So they, the project applicant has complied with the stormwater requirements through the preparation of a stormwater conceptual plan. We don't typically provide those to the Planning Commission, but we could speak briefly to how the stormwater will be captured and treated on-site through, and Jeff, if you want to step in here, that might be helpful to describe that with the proper terms.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Yeah, Jeff Manchester, city engineer with the Public Works Department. As Melissa mentioned, we've reviewed that preliminary. We understand, and I know the applicant is here, that a lot of the water will be captured in some of the interior drive aisles and treated. All the stormwater is subject to our ordinance, which they have to treat the 85th percentile with permanent stormwater BMPs before discharging to the public rideaway, which would most likely be along El Cajon Boulevard without seeing final engineering documents.
Okay. So where is it being treated?
So from our concept level plans, we understand it's being treated in the interior drive aisles. I think there's landscaping buffers that run between the two buildings, this was our understanding, but again, we have not quite yet moved into final engineering within them. Some of those details aren't quite refined.
Yeah, I've seen different versions where it's treated at the surface, or there's a catch basin that's treating it, or it gets funneled into a sub-surface treatment basin. So I was just kind of curious, because I don't see anything obvious in the plans.
I understand that the applicant's, when the applicant's engineering team members is available to answer that question in more detail when you're ready.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yes?
Just a quick question. I see briefly here solar is an option, so is that basically if they're to be built to be purchased, they could purchase solar for the property when they buy the property? Because it does state here that solar is an option. It's offering solar, I just didn't know if that's standard or if it's an upgrade that they can purchase at, when they purchase these.
I would probably defer the question about the installation of the solar to the applicant. There are newer energy code requirements that do require the installation of solar, so, but there may be additional offerings over and above that. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right. At this time, let's go ahead and open public hearing. We have speaker card? Or a presentation, I take it, at this time?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm, oh, I'm waiting for my presentation, I'm sorry. And I'll apologize in advance that I think there are some probably duplicate slides from what Melissa's already gone over with you, but I'll try to keep those brief and answer some of the questions for you, hopefully along the way.
For the record, could you give us your name and position?
I'm Karen Alves, I'm Vice President of Development for City Ventures, the applicant on this project. So thank you all for the opportunity to present to you on this agenda item. So I wanted to start by telling you a little bit about who City Ventures is. City Ventures was founded in 2009 by some leading industry professionals with the goal of bringing some high-quality design and mixed-use products to underutilized infill sites. And we've done so successfully throughout California by entitling in over 60 California cities. We're really proud of the number of communities that we've created, providing much-needed housing throughout the state and providing opportunities for homeownership. We're committed, a committed home builder who are experts in development and construction processes, and we pride ourselves on building long-lasting relationships with cities and engaging with the neighborhoods that we build in. City Ventures is also a green builder, incorporating environmentally friendly design practices for over a decade. While City Ventures is based in Irvine, California, you're likely going to see many of our communities built within San Diego County, where we've completed projects in towns like Carlsbad, Chila Vista, Encinitas, Oceanside, Rancho Santa Fe, San Diego, and Santee. Most recently, we just closed out on our project Ariana in the city of Santee, and we are days away from breaking ground in La Mesa on a project called Park Ridge, which will be 60 townhome units. This is just a sampling of some of the multifamily for-sale projects that we've successfully completed in infill locations. The proposed site is located at 300 El Cajon Boulevard, the former site of an auto dealership. The surrounding commercial uses exist to the north and east of the site, and residential homes are located to the west. The site's within the corridor of the city's future capital improvement projects that will be south along El Cajon and Johnson, as well as improvements to the north connecting to West Main Street. The project that we're proposing here is within the Transit District Specific Plan. We're proposing 116 homes featuring a contemporary, modern, three-story design spread out among 15 buildings. Floor plans will offer three-bedroom and three bathrooms, ranging in size from approximately 1,300 to 1,500 square feet. Each home will have a two-car side-by-side or tandem garage with private patio and deck spaces. The project will feature common area amenities that include pool, citrus groves, event lawn, furnished social gathering areas, and bike racks to encourage connectivity to the future downtown improvements. Additionally, City Ventures will be providing off-site improvements to enhance the surrounding area. The improvements will include removing a portion of the median along El Cajon Boulevard and Lexington to add a turnpocket and modify the existing traffic signal. We'll also be improving the right-of-way along El Cajon, along El Cajon Boulevard, excuse me, fronting the project to complement the city's upcoming capital improvement projects with new stamped concrete sidewalks, irrigation, and street trees. Additional enhancements will take place along the project frontage on Johnson Avenue that will include the undergrounding of existing power lines, adding sidewalk, and street trees. Shown here is a copy of the site plan that was included in your staff report. You'll see that the site has been designed with adequate traffic circulation, guest parking, and ample amenity spaces. The project will be gated with a primary entrance located on El Cajon Boulevard and a secondary entrance off Johnson Avenue. The design team on this project worked closely with city staff to design building exteriors with modern feels using clean lines and a variety of materials, such as stucco, siding, brick veneer, wood railings, and metal canopies. A secondary color scheme is being proposed to create variation between buildings throughout the site, and landscape planting areas will also be added to soften the design. The proposed amenity areas are designed with a vision of bringing a sense of community to the residents. The pool deck will be furnished with cabanas, lounge chairs, tables, and barbecues, and will include a restroom building with showers. A citrus grove will be planted to provide a more organic experience and will be located adjacent to the event lawn where residents can gather to socialize, play games, or listen to music. Smaller areas within the site are also furnished with benches and areas where residents can spend time reading a book or playing with their pets. As I mentioned in the introduction, City Ventures has been a green builder from the start, providing all-electric neighborhoods and environmentally friendly building features included in the price of the home. Each home is fitted for solar panels, helping to reduce the homeowner's monthly utility bills. Dual-glazed windows, solar reflective roof materials, electric water heaters, pre-wired conduit for electric vehicle car chargers are installed in every garage, and those are just a few of the features included in each home. We're constantly improving our design and working to make each project better than the one before. Thank you all for your time, and I'll be available for any questions. The design team is also available via Zoom, should you have any questions specifically for them.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes?
I'd like to re-ask my question about the water features, drainage. Do you have that information, or is that one of your colleagues?
Yes, so we will be using modular wetlands as the water treatment on-site. Our engineer can speak more specifically to that, but we have done preliminary studies and laid those out, and those are typically, I believe we have five units that will be laid out throughout the site, and those are in a mix of landscaped areas as well as under streets, parking, drive aisles.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I think there was also a question related to solar, and just so you know, that's not an addition, those are included in the price of the home.
Great, well, we're excited. It's going to be a great project, we're looking forward to starting our process of the Transit District, and I think it'll be a great way to get things rolling in that area, so thank you for coming to us. How has it been working? You work with lots of cities, how has the city of El Cajon been to work with?
Great.
Good.
I can tell you, very responsive, it's been great to work with. Melissa and Jeff's team have both been fantastic, and getting to this point isn't ever easy, so being able to do that in the amount of time that we did has been great.
Great, and when you looking to break ground?
Well, we were just having that conversation, we want to go full speed ahead, so we are hoping to be at a point for grading by the end of this year, if possible, no pressure. But that's our hope, is that we can be able to start breaking ground by the end of the year.
Great. Look forward to it, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, we appreciate you. All right. If there's no other speakers on this item, I will make a motion, yes?
We do have a couple of comments that need to be read into the record.
Yes.
I did provide copies of those comments to the commission, but I'm going to go ahead and read them. One is from Patrick Grillo, and he states, hello, if you get this email before tonight's Planning Commission meeting, I would like to submit the following public comment for Agenda Item Two. I am very supportive of the proposed housing project at the El Cajon Boulevard Town Homes. I agree with the staff report that this project has excellent potential to accelerate development along El Cajon Boulevard and in the surrounding area in line with the vision of the Transit District Specific Plan to create beautiful entryways to the city, among other benefits. It will also help with housing costs by creating more housing stock in a desirable area and near transit. Thank you, Patrick Grillo. The next comment letter is from Steve Nelson. Comments provided by Steve Nelson, owner of 553 to 557 West Main, background, commercial general contractor since 1987, and have constructed and or developed over 1,000 multifamily units and close to, excuse me, 1 billion in commercial construction projects in four states. Reference website. Background, I closed escrow on January 3rd, 2018, on 553 to 557 West Main, as a CM heavy commercial light manufacturing zone property. I was never notified of the change in zoning to the area to CG with an MU overlay, until recently after receiving a notice of the subject proposed project and conducting my own research. I am against this change in zoning because of future plans I have for my property relating to manufacturing, excuse me, that will negatively affect a residential neighbor. General comments against SDP-2021-0001. One, reduced property values of surrounding businesses. The proposed residential development would reduce the surrounding property values because of their reduced ability to operate as a commercial zone property. Spencer, would you mind taking over, reading this, and you did just a moment?
All right, number two, reduce potential uses of surrounding businesses. Leasing the surrounding existing commercial properties will be difficult and at a lower lease rate because of the residential impact and impending problems related to noise and other commercial-related impacts to residents. Specific comments against SDP-2021-0001 relative to the proposed concept design, second submitted dated 4/5/21. Number one, the development should be apartments, not condominiums. The surrounding commercial properties will be in conflict with a powerful and well-funded HOA over impending noise, commercial uses, and commercial use issues. Apartments are a better choice when attempting to mix residential and commercial zoned region. Number two, setbacks to establish neighboring commercial properties are too close. Zero-to-10-foot side and rear setbacks are not realistic when mixing residential with existing commercial uses. Number three, no sound walls included in the design. American recycling east of the proposed development makes loud noises and emanates fumes all day, seven days a week, which is appropriate and expected for a commercial business in this location. My future property use at 553 to 557 West Main will also produce normal manufacturing noises. These are two small examples of the importance of a sound wall in the design. We assume that an acoustic report is part of the development permit and will properly take into effect the potential noises from take into effect the potential noises from the existing properties. Number four, general design maximizes density but is situated like nineteen seventies communist state-owned housing development. The design is very condensed and lined up like cheap state-owned housing. It needs to be more spread out with green space and variation in the architecture. Number five, no green space, too much coverage with hardscape and structures. The proposed amount of green space is very small relative to requirements of similar developments in San Diego County. Number six, HOA regulations need to disclose elevated noise and fumes from surrounding properties. Future buyers slash renters need to be adequately notified that they are living in an established commercial zoned region, and that noise and commercial disruptions will exist. Number seven, inadequate visitor or tenant parking. The proposed design is underparked for visitors and tenants, which will result in off-street parking problems on surrounding city streets. Number eight, questionable fire truck circulation. Dense designs of this magnitude typically have more space for fire truck access and circulation. Typically, a perimeter fire access road would be integrated into the design. Number nine, horizontal wood railing. The horizontal wood patio railing should be removed from the design. What is a constant maintenance problem, and most insurers will not cover horizontal design because of the latter effect and potential risk to children climbing over it. Number ten is solar. The design does not offer space for solar on rooftops, which is important for new developments. Number eleven, stormwater. The design does not account for any stormwater one-off containment in the site. Most projects need complete containment of all water runoff into filtration basins. And number twelve, electric vehicle charging. Accommodations for a visitor or tenant, electric car charging points should be integrated into the design as fast approaching requirements become mandatory.
Thank you. Can you pull up the map of the project again? Melissa, I just want to see where his location at, I'm just curious. So where's he, where's, if you could put the mouse, where's his location at he's talking about? Those two, yeah.
I believe his location, excuse me, is up here.
Okay. The current commercial properties, they're already permitted in unless they do any kind of renovations or anything, for the most part, are they, would they be considered grandfathered in?
They are legal non-conforming in some cases, and the Transit District plan does allow for them to continue or even expand their operations.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions concerning those comments?
I just have one, I guess, question that, you know, thinking about the one comment about the horizontal design for the balconies. I do know that this last year, we did see an extraordinary amount of children that fell from second and third-story windows because of so many kids being home, so that would be something to just address. You know, what's the thickness, you know, is it small enough for a child's foot to get in there to allow for climbing? What's the height of the, you know, the balcony railings? Six feet, okay, that's right, she did say that. I mean, that would be an extraordinary amount for a child to climb, depending upon their age, but not, the balcony railing, the balcony railing, yeah. So, I mean, I think it's just something at least to have a conversation about and see if there can be any kind of a change in that. I mean, it looks really nice, and honestly, I didn't think about it first thought, even though I should, that's my, that's what I do, but, but maybe just something as a consideration if there can be a slight change in that design, even if it's just adding some vertical things in there to make it harder.
All right, would the applicant like to come forward and address that? Thank you.
Sure, I think that's certainly something we can look at, either closing up the slats, making those much more narrow, we can certainly look at changing those to a vertical look, but we can certainly work with city staff on something that's comfortable. We went with a wood design here, but if another material is best to be used here, we can do that as well, but certainly we're not opposed to changing, changing out that design is something that would, would not pose as much of a safety concern.
Could you do possibly a plexiglass behind so it still has a look but the kids can't get their feet in from behind? Like if you do a plexiglass veneer on the backside so it still has that clear look but the kids can't?
Yes, so the answer is yes, we could. The problem with that, however, is the long-term maintenance of having a material over a plexiglass. You can't really get in to clean that, and so over time that becomes an issue, but I do think that we can come up with some other materials or another look that gives us that same kind of feature, but that's definitely safer. We've, we're working on a couple of projects.
Even a clear glass look up nice there, if you did like a clear glass or something there so they couldn't, you know, it still would have that modern look, but the kids couldn't, you know, and I know some people might not like the privacy issue, but maybe the HOA, you could put something there, greenery or something that the tenants could or the owners could to make that buffer, just so it's safer.
Yep, we certainly will take a look at some more designs that we can run through staff and have them help us make a selection.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant? Well, she's up. Okay, thank you. Any other concerns when addressing that letter? Thank you for reading it to the record, I think there's a lot of things that have been covered there.
Just a quick comment regarding the general comments against, just a reminder that economic considerations such as property value or future use of a property isn't a consideration for planning commission.
Thank you. All right. Well, at this time, if there's no more, no more public comment at this point?
There are no additional public comments.
Great, thank you. All right, I make a motion to close public hearing?
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Circo, please vote. Okay, public comment is closed. Well, Commissioners, it's been, property's been sitting there for a long time.
Yeah, I don't even remember what the last auto business was that we had there, but...
Wasn't it Toyota at first, then Volkswagen?
My CVW was the last dealer, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I love that we're activating it with home ownership rather than, as the comment was saying, it should be apartments. I don't see that. We want more people to have the opportunity to buy in El Cajon.
Yes, I agree, hundred percent.
And I, I'm always torn on the density issues because I want to see more houses. I like that they are owned, but they are shared walls, and they don't have a lot of their own space. A few of the places have bigger patios, but they're basically just patios. But there are lots of people who don't like outside as much as I do.
Well, I also think they're a great starter for a young family, you know, kind of working your way up.
Yeah, and three-bedroom, three-bath is pretty big.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it is.
And I love the citrus grove, the shared areas are very nice, and I really like that it activates the street. Instead of having driveways or a wall on El Cajon Boulevard and South Johnson, you get the front doors in people's houses. And that was one of my favorite things about the development here was the front doors facing out.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments, fellow Commissioners?
I do know one of the things I liked in the, you know, the, I think this is what gave part of the density bonus was the improvements of some of the other areas with the sidewalks and more trees even beyond just the project site, if I understand that correctly, because I think it will help. It's been nice seeing some of the other newer buildings, you know, the San Ysidro Health and, you know, I think the Pace Center, you start seeing some newer buildings on El Cajon Boulevard, which is the entrance to El Cajon, and I think we've needed a lot of updating for when people are just starting to enter into El Cajon, and this is another one of those kind of gateway areas, and I think it will help draw people into thinking about, oh, maybe this is, oh, look at, these are pretty nice places, because it is a little bit less expensive to live further away from the main part of the city, and we know housing prices have gone up, so it will be nice for people to think, oh, maybe I could own something that looks nice that's here, you know, and still close to freeways and transit and everything else, too, so I think it's a very nice project.
Considering this is what I do for a living, I appreciate more houses to sell in El Cajon, so I do like the fact that it has a very modern feel to kind of update El Cajon a little bit and kind of bring some life back to El Cajon Boulevard, so I think it's a good start to a better beginning, so thank you.
Great, all right, would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion. I move to adopt the next resolutions in order approving the proposed SEQA determination SDP dash two zero two one dash zero 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 one and TSM dash two zero two one dash zero 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 five, subject to conditions.
Second.
Whose second was that? All right, motion made by Commissioner Circo, seconded by Commissioner Pollock Rude, please vote. All right, motion passes, congratulations. Thank you for building here, we appreciate it. All right, Agenda Item number three is the Draft General Plan Amendment Workshop. It is a workshop, is not subject to SEQA, and staff recommendation is to provide feedback. It is the General Plan Amendment Safety and Housing and Environmental Justice Element. Steph?
Thank you, and just to clarify in the last item that that will be going to City Council July thirteenth.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is a workshop item on our proposed general plan amendment, which will cover the update to our safety and housing element and our new environmental justice element. We've had several informational items and workshop items already on some of this, so I won't go into detail, and there's more in your staff report, but we've been working on this project since April of twenty twenty and had a number of virtual online outreach events, stakeholder interviews, conducted surveys, and held Planning Commission workshops as well to get feedback into the development of these elements. And so, just to recap, the housing element is mandatory element that has to be updated every eight years, and because we're updating our housing element, it has triggered an update to our safety element, which in turn has triggered a new environmental justice element. So these are state-mandated elements that we do have to update and incorporate within our general plan, and the general plan is really our overall vision for how the city should grow and develop over long-term, you know, twenty to thirty-year planning horizon. So having these updated elements are important for making sure that our vision stays current. So the safety element, the draft is attached to your agenda report, and for Commissioners, it's also available on your iPads within the Dropbox app. The safety element does address six main hazards to people living, working, and also property within El Cajon, and these are air pollution, extreme heat, flooding, geological hazards, hazardous materials, and wildfire. And so the safety element is really just a collection of goals, policies, and actions that seek to reduce or minimize the risk to people and property as a result of these hazards. There are six goals, primary goals of the safety element, and within each of those goals or underneath each of those overarching goals are specific actions that the city intends to undertake to ensure that these goals are achieved. I won't go over these in detail, but essentially, the city's looking to improve our air quality through a variety of actions to promote a built environment that stays cool, which I think certainly, we can see that there are more and more heat events, and the heat events that we have are longer and hotter, and we're seeking to minimize the risks, as I mentioned, from our natural hazards, you know, such as earthquakes, landslides, fires, and maintain adequate emergency preparedness and response capabilities through our emergency responders, but also through things like our community emergency response team, which is composed of volunteers. And then making sure that we are keeping our emergency response systems up to date, and they can serve our community members through, you know, whatever means that we can, we can use to inform people when there is a hazard or if there's a emergency event. And then as much as possible to make sure that our community does stay safe, does stay safe from any human-caused hazards, and that could be through, you know, environmental pollution from hazardous businesses and that type of thing. So really, the safety element guides how El Cajon and our built environment really is going to ensure that, that we are keeping our residents safe and our property safe from harm, and we do that by regulating building in hazardous areas. One of the big updates to the safety element addresses wildfire risk, and so now the Cal Fire and the State Board of Forestry is involved, and when we update our safety element, they'll actually be reviewing and making a recommendation on the safety element, and then making sure things like our streets are adequate for fire trucks and first responders, and that we have good emergency evacuation routes throughout the city. And then using things like tree planting and green spaces to mitigate or improve air quality as well as to help deal with some of those heat events that I mentioned before. So you'll find within the draft safety element, all of these goals as well as those policies and actions, and so through this workshop, we're really hoping to hear your feedback on, you know, whether or not we've hit the mark with some of those drafts, or if there are additional policies, goals, and actions that the Planning Commission would like to see incorporated. So we'll switch gears here to the environmental justice element, and the core of environmental justice is really recognizing that some of our lower-income communities, especially those that are where people of color live, have experienced higher health risks and exposure to environmental pollution, and that's through poor air quality, that can be through a lack of access to public facilities and services, and so we see higher rates of health issues like asthma and obesity and cardiovascular disease in these communities. So the EJ element, and what the state has set forth for cities and counties is to come up with actions that we can take to reduce those health risks, help mitigate them through improvements to air quality, increasing access to public facilities, making sure people have access to healthy food, are there grocery stores in the neighborhood, and then making sure that people have safe and sanitary housing. And then lastly, looking at how we can increase physical activity, especially amongst our youth, to make sure that they're leading healthy lives. And in El Cajon, we used a couple of different tools to identify environmental justice communities. One is the Cal EnviroScreen, and that is what the state has set forth as kind of the minimum threshold for identifying those communities. The communities that score in the top twenty-five percent for Cal EnviroScreen automatically have to be considered for environmental justice, and so we have two census tracts, oops, excuse me, that are identified through Cal EnviroScreen, and it's the kind of the large census tract that bisects the Interstate Eight right here and a smaller census tract over down here near El Cajon Boulevard. The second tool that we used was the Healthy Places Index, and that uses a variety of factors, goes even beyond what Cal EnviroScreen does, to look at, you know, lower-income communities and some of the factors that are involved with, with people experiencing these higher health risks and higher exposure to pollution. And so all of the communities that are identified here in the blue and purple are those lower-income communities that are experiencing a higher level of burden due to, you know, environmental pollution or lack of resources. And so as you go through the environmental justice element, you'll see that we've evaluated each of these two primary areas separately. We're classifying one as more concentrated on the downtown area, and then one We're classifying one as, as more concentrated on the downtown area, and then one more on the Bostonia area, because they experience issues in a slightly different manner based on their, the location and some of the other factors. So for environmental justice goals, we're really looking to see how we can improve the quality of the built and natural environments. So in, you know, specifically in the downtown area where we know lots of people need to walk to accessing schools and shops and their jobs, you know, making sure that people have shaded, shaded areas to, to walk or bicycle. We want to make sure that we have public facilities and services that are equitably located and distributed through our environmental justice communities. That's, you know, things like recreational centers, parks, and ensuring that people have access to healthy food. So what we found is that there is a good distribution of grocery stores and different ethnic markets in El Cajon, but there was some concern about maybe there's more access to unhealthy fast food options and maybe not as many fast, healthy foods. If that's a word. And then making sure that we're providing the park and recreation programming that serves all ages, so that seniors, children, and different cultural groups. And then incorporating meaningful and effective participation throughout the city to involve the residents of these communities that maybe sometimes don't have the time and resources to be involved, making sure that they have the information and they know how they can be involved and getting that out to them. And then the last policy is prioritizing improvements and programs that address the needs of residents. This is going to be involve a little bit of a shift for El Cajon in looking at how we are spending our fiscal resources, how we're programming capital improvements, making sure that, you know, that, that no area is being left out, that we're really focusing that our resources where the need is highest. And so just like the safety element, there are policies and actions within each of these goals. So you can see things like our multifamily inspection program and how we think that's a real critical piece of making sure that people have safe and sanitary housing, people who maybe are unable or unwilling to, you know, make complaints or unable to, to get issues rectified by landlords. Other examples are, you know, implementing some of the plans that we already have in place. The Recreation Department developed a ten minute walk park plan a few years back to, to look at incorporating more pocket parks and active rec in El Cajon. So looking at how we can implement that, focus that within these areas. Those are just a couple of examples. So next, I'm going to turn it over to Spencer, and he's going to just give you an update on where we are with the housing element, since we had the last workshop and initiated HCD review.
Right. So, yeah, I don't want to do too much recap, but we just have a few recap points here. Basically, the housing element is, the purpose is to analyze the need for new housing, especially for specific groups like elderly, new families, that sort of thing. Identify, identify community characteristics and any constraints that there are to housing development. The housing element will contain a site's inventory to, to kind of show where housing development may, may grow in El Cajon. And then it also identifies programs and policies to increase housing production. And so like Melissa indicated, what I kind of want to update you on tonight is new state guidance for affirmatively furthering fair housing, A F F H, and then also some of the review comments that we received from housing and community development. So first, we'll talk about affirmatively furthering fair housing. And just a quick background, that comes, comes about from Assembly Bill six eight six, and it's basically a framework to promote inclusive, inclusive communities, further housing choice, and address racial and economic disparities through government programs. And so the main thing that staff have been working on is looking at HCD's guidance for programs and policies, which they had split up into four different categories. That's housing mobility strategies, new housing choices and affordability of those choices, encouraging community conservation and revitalization, and then protecting existing residents from displacement. We did include an attachment to the report that has some of those kind of brainstormed policy and program ideas. And I also have some, some slides in the background here if we want to take a closer look at those a little bit later. But then the next thing I wanted to update you on was the HCD review. They did return comments to us on May seventeenth, and a lot of their comments and corrections really were just requesting additional details or data points to be included. However, there were a handful of kind of more substantive changes to policies or programs, and those are listed here. So one of them was to revise the zoning code for large residential care facilities. Essentially, new legislation, as I understand, requires that we allow for large residential care facilities by right where we allow housing. So currently, the zoning code allows for what are called small residential care facilities for six or fewer. This would be to allow for the large facility for seven or more persons. The next was to establish a ministerial review for Senate Bill thirty-five projects, S B thirty-five. And Melissa might need to jump back in here to explain the details of S B thirty-five. But essentially, it's a, a way for a development to be proposed for multi, multifamily housing. And so we need to establish a process to review those ministerially. The next would be to establish a monitoring program for ADUs. Yeah?
I might be, just because of context, ministerial? I'm thinking ministry or minister. So can you help me out?
So basically without, at the staff level review, I guess, is a way to put it.
Administrative.
Administrative review.
Okay.
Maybe I used an incorrect term there.
Yeah, essentially, we don't have discretionary review at that point. It's, it's something like issuing a license, issuing a building permit as a ministerial review.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
The next one was to establish a monitoring program for our ADU production or accessory dwelling units. Basically, the state is looking for us to meet the, the estimated number of ADUs that we're anticipating in the next housing cycle. And if we're finding that we're off track, then we would need to implement some other measures to maybe advertise or, or try to get some more ADUs in the, in the works, yeah.
Just a quick question, with the Senate Bill nine that's just in the works right now, and Senate Bill ten, but I don't know if that'll go through, but regarding the lot splits, does that affect El Cajon and the housing element at all?
It doesn't currently affect our housing element. It could in the future affect our capacity potentially, because it could increase our housing capacity. But right now, we're not taking that into account with our, our housing element.
And the last one here was to establish a program for affordable housing replacement. And basically, what that means is when we have a, an existing site with housing development on that site, and we're, you know, removing that unit for development of new housing, there'd be, need to be a program in place to replace that, that unit at the same affordability level or lower.
As, as the prior unit?
As the unit you were moving.
Okay.
Thank you, Spencer. And so in terms of next steps, obviously, we want to hear your feedback as part of this workshop, but I just wanted to give you a roadmap of where we're going. We do have a negative declaration that has been prepared for these elements and is currently under public review and will be until July twelfth. So that's posted on our website, the same place, cityofelcjon.us/plan. That's where all the draft elements are, as well as the environmental document. And then our plan is to return to the Planning Commission on July twentieth for a formal recommendation to City Council and City Council on July twenty-seventh. We do have a statutory deadline to complete the housing element by August fifteenth. So we're getting very close to that, you know, due to COVID and, and working really hard to try and get public input on our environmental justice element. We did have to lengthen the schedule a little bit, but it is really important that we get the element, the housing element at least adopted by that deadline. Otherwise, we could face potential fines or civil action, or we could jeopardize our eight-year housing cycle. Essentially, we would have to update our housing element every four years instead of eight years if we don't achieve a certified housing element by that date. So that concludes our presentation, and we're here for questions and comments, and we'll be taking down notes. Thank you.
Just a question, we don't have the twenty twenty census data technically, or do we have any kind of idea? I saw some numbers. Let's see. But, but I don't know if those are like confirmed or not, but I did see some numbers, or were those just projections?
That's correct. We do not have the twenty twenty census data at the city level. I don't believe that will be available until September. So this is based on the previous census, as well as American Community Survey data. I think twenty seventeen, I think, was the last big data update for American Community Survey.
I mean, when we, when we certified the census in twenty ten, we were around, I want to say like a hundred and one, just over a hun, maybe just over a hundred. And now it looks like they're looking at possibly being around a hundred and four, which would make, that sounds about right, considering what, what, you know, new housing we've been able to, you know, put in. Okay, but do we know where, I was looking at this, so that census data is also going to give us like, has the median income risen or been lowered? We don't have any of that data either, right? I mean, I looked at some of the other charts, but I couldn't tell, they, they were always going to eighteen.
Yeah, we don't have it for twenty twenty.
Okay.
So we won't have that available for this housing element.
Okay. Any questions for Steph?
Just a couple of comments. Looking through the safety element at the air improvement. I know that in San Diego, one of the downsides is that we are at the catch side of the Baja Basin. So a lot of Mexico's pollution gets imported to us by way of air streams. But one of my favorite things about El Cajon, even before I moved here, was all the trees that we have. We do have a bunch of sites that are currently undeveloped, and every five to ten years, somebody comes through and cuts down all the trees that keep trying to grow back. And I don't know if there's anything we can do about that. I mean, until the site gets developed, let the trees be, let them, because specifically on Third, at the end of Oakdale, there's an empty lot. And on Third, on the way to Madison, there's a few empty spaces. And all those spaces used to have trees. And since those trees got cut down, I can tell the heat difference on hot days. And I live a couple blocks west. But we've, I think we've done very well at putting policies in place to encourage old growth trees to remain when possible, when feasible, and to develop new shade, because we all know that the city's cooler with more deciduous trees. Palm trees don't do enough, I'm sorry. But these old oak trees and olive trees and even the pecan trees are very good at providing shade when needed. And then another comment on the accessibility to healthy food. I'm sure you've seen the business slogan, you can have it, well, I'm not going to get into that, but food, you can pick two. It can be fast and healthy, healthy and cheap, or fast and cheap, but you can't have all three. We do have a lot of really good grocery stores, a lot of local markets, and we have quite a few fast food places. Second has almost anything you can think of, including Subway. I'm trying to think if there's another healthy alternative on that conduit. But a lot of the healthier options, especially if they're fast, healthy, they're not cheap at all. But we do have some really great family on markets. Kalin's, my wife discovered a year ago, and their, their produce is even cheaper than sprouts. And so the grocery accessibility is really good. I mean, there's so many different markets. My wife and I have explored Main Street going, I love Halva, and I introduced my wife to it. And you have to go to Mediterranean markets now. I used to get it at Ralph's on Second until they closed. I was looking through some of the other safety elements, the five hundred year flood plane, which I'm, my backyard's part of the creek system, and we had in two thousand eleven, no, two thousand, it was more recent than that. I don't remember when, but we had a very wet winter, and my entire backyard turned into a bog one foot below the surface, which was awesome for the plants and awesome for my kids who turned into mud pies. I don't know that many people are aware of the creek system that used to be in El Cajon, but one of the, one of the strategies for improving upon the flooding possibility is re-converting the cement channels back into natural creek areas, where the, the rocks and the plants that grow in the creek bed slow down the advance of water if it were a flash flood. But because it, concrete is impermeable, when you remove the impermeable surface and return it to dirt at the base, the water is able to then seep back into the aquifer that originally existed. And El Cajon was established as an agricultural station for the emissions in San Diego. Because of the high water table, we were able to grow a lot of olives, wheat, grapes, a lot of different types of agriculture throughout here when it was Knox Corners. We talked through the housing element a lot, and we will continue to talk through the housing element. But I love that we are continuing to provide new locations, new strategies for homeownership, rather than just building apartments for rent. I think that is improving our city. I have seen the difference from the nineties through now with the way that you see people walking on streets. And there's still the various homeless people walking the streets. I would love to see us able to do something for them, but there are so many strategies that can be tried and can help us segment, but there's also another segment that will ruin whatever we try to do for the rest of them. But there was a part of the safety element about heat events and finding cool zones, and that was really hard last year because all of our cool zones were shut down. The mall was closed, the libraries were closed, and then we had a heat event, and they said, don't turn your air on, go shopping. Something like the citrus grove that was proposed for this would be a wonderful natural heat abatement. I don't know that we can build a citrus grove, but maybe we could incentivize a private partnership to create, well, we've got community gardens. I don't know that we have very many of them developed right now, but a community garden with trees would create a cooler environment that people could escape to without having to rely on electricity. And then the development that we're looking at in the transit specific zone, renaturalizing the creek at Johnson, that sort of an area, combined with a little bit of activated landscaping, would provide another cool area. I remember growing up in San Clemente Canyon, playing Rose, Rose Canyon Creek, watching out for poison oak, of course, but playing in the creek was something you could do on a hot day because of all the oak trees that were mature, shaded the creek, even if it was only an inch of water, it was wet and it was cool. So I think if we could find a way to develop our, our creek basins in a public friendly manner, I think that would help on multiple levels in the safety element.
Thank you. I had a question, are there any programs? You talk about the environmental justice, you know, one of the areas that's hitting the lower income families is really, more than anything, is the cost of energy. Are there subsidies programs, especially electricity? Are there subsidies programs, especially electricity, you know? Gas is not as expensive as electricity, thank goodness, I still have mostly gas appliances. But that is an area where, I don't know if that's controlled by the state, if that's controlled by regions. But I just feel that that the lower-income households are the ones that are really having to suffer through that burden. You know, the, I felt like we shut down a lot, I don't think California even makes electricity anymore and you can really, over the last six years, you've just watched the kilowatt-hour price just about triple. I mean, I'm glad I have solar, but I'm just wondering what can be done, if there's any programs in that case, especially for young families, especially for families that, you know, I mean, it was amazing when you found out how many families didn't even have internet when the pandemic first hit, especially with Cajon Valley and what they had to do to try to help that situation. But if there's a way to, you know, a grant program or some sort of, I know we've got some money lying around these days with some of the relief funds, but I think that would be a great way that people could spend more money on healthy food and not so much money on electricity, you know? It's just, it's getting to the point where it's almost, you know, unaffordable for so many people. But if there's a way to put something together, that would be my suggestion, you know, especially for the lower-income families.
I know SDG&E has a fifty percent discount for low-income families. Unfortunately, a lot of the discounts with electricity go to the homeowners. And a lot of low-income families do not have their own house.
Yeah, the renters.
So most often, when you're renting, you don't have access to the same incentives. They still have the CARES program, but you can't go solar if you're renting.
Right, sure.
There's, there's so much you can do and then you're stuck. You can check insulation, you can check all the weather stripping indoors and windows. And SDG&E has a really comprehensive program for renters and homeowners to check the house and see how you can improve your energy efficiency. They provide free microwaves, but you can't really bring the cost of electricity any lower without us actually producing electricity in El Cajon or in San Diego County.
Yeah, I know. I mentioned the peaker plants that we have and that keeps us from getting the blackouts and the brownouts because of the the ones that SDG&E built.
Yeah.
But statewide, I think it's kind of not a good situation.
Yeah, a lot of our electricity is currently being transmitted from Arizona.
I know.
And solar fields out in the desert. And so even though the electricity cost to generate is lower, the cost of transmission is higher. Right now, the state of California is trying to get more households to have solar on their house. The more households in commercial districts that have solar locally that produce their own electricity and then sell to SDG&E, the transmission cost will be lower because it's produced locally.
Yeah. Just when the sun goes down, we've got to figure that one out.
Yep.
And in addition to that, I know that being, doing property management, a lot of the tenants would really like solar and they want their owners to get solar, but the incentive for the owners to take on that kind of cost, if it's not cost-effective or maybe have some sort of plan for owners to add that to their units. Because it would, it would be advantage to the owners and also to the tenants who are strapped for cash, you know, and can't make the monthly payment. You know, having a three-thousand-dollar rent payment and then have a pool that you have to keep the pump going, you know, they can't afford it and they can't have it go green because part of the lease is to keep it not green. So they can't flip the pump off, but it's just things that people don't think about as tenants. And then when they're now on a year lease, it's a little too late. And they get this stuff about solar, like, oh, it's great, but the owner doesn't want to foot that bill. So it's kind of like a catch-22 either way, but it would be a good idea to maybe get some incentive to get more into solar. And I know there has been solar incentives, I guess it's just us doing proper management, trying to sell that aspect to the actual owners.
Anything else, Phil Commissioners?
Yeah, I just had a few comments, I guess, just thinking about the safety plan. I think this is where it's appropriate for this part. And, you know, I know that even with some of this, as we're trying to think about people being more active, I have noticed some of our infrastructure, some of our sidewalks and all that, you know, where they're kind of like this instead of flat. You know, so being able to look at those areas, I think Magnolia has a lot of that, where some of the sidewalks need to be repaired so that can be safer for people that are walking or I know bicycles aren't supposed to be on there, sometimes kids are on bikes or scooters. But also our residents that use wheelchairs or motorized wheelchairs. And just, again, just walking, that can be an issue. Also, I'll just say on the whole bike and scooter, I know we put in a lot of those bike lanes and kind of restriped parts of the, especially Magnolia. This is more, I know more of a law enforcement issue, but I'm still seeing, it's rare to see a child or a young adult with a helmet. And so I think that is something that we need to have more of a campaign about safety. It is a law. I don't think that it's really one of those things that we're enforcing, but I know that, you know, where I work, at Rady Children's, we see the impact of that. So that also might be something to be addressed. And the, you know, we do have some areas of overgrowth of weeds and overgrowth of plants. And we do want to maintain plants, but I know when we get lots of overgrowth in certain areas, sometimes those areas become encampments and can also become fire hazards. Obviously, if it's on a person's property, then that's when the not compliance, compliance officer gets involved and, and, you know, talks, you know, talks to the homeowners. But on areas where it's more city property, I know some areas are Caltrans where it's more by the freeways, but that's something also for us to make sure we're maintaining. And then I guess going into probably the economic, Commissioner Circle commented about the community gardens. And actually, I had already written that down because I wasn't aware of community gardens where residents could have, you know, shared spaces, especially people that have apartments and might not have a lot of area to plant. One, it brings people together, it brings some resources of things together, like maybe the water resource or just some land. And can also encourage people to produce food that's healthier for them. Produce is really, there's been a serious produce shortage. Even rest, even some of the fast-food restaurants have pulled what healthy choices they did have from their menu. I'll use McDonald's as an example. They used to have salads, they don't anymore. And that's more and more places because there has been a shortage. Some of it because of COVID, some of it because of other issues. But I just always think that people that grow their own food, especially kids that get involved with that are more likely to eat those kinds of healthy foods. It brings some camaraderie. And I think it also is just a nice thing for your, for the community and for the low-income community as well. And then the last thing was, I know we've talked a lot about the transit element and so I'm just, I still think we need to focus on trying to clean up the area around the main transit center. I know that that's also going to be bringing in organizations, you know, there's a large homeless population. There's some commercial businesses that are vacated that they continue to kind of take over. As we talk about safety and health, I just think of all the human waste that's, that is on the sidewalks that I have experienced because there's a business that I take my dog to up there. So, and I know that even just the safety of some of those employees has been, has been a big deal. So we want people to feel comfortable coming into the transit center. We're going to have this beautiful development that would be within walking distance. But I would be worried about walking myself from there to the transit center. So, you know, I think that that's something that we also need to make sure that we're addressing. Again, I know there's some law enforcement. Maybe even there's the bus that goes to Viejas or something over Saquon over there. Maybe even having them help because that would be of a big interest to them to make sure that that area is safe and clean. Because they'll want people to walk over to use their bus to go to their casino. So I think that's also something to maybe garner their, any of their involvement in that as well. And I think, I think that's it, thank you.
Kind of adding on to that garden thing, I know over in Kaiser, they demoed the old Kaiser building. There's a huge community garden there. But I know there's a parking lot that kind of dilapidated, so I know it's kind of private funds, but it'd be nice maybe if they took some of that parking lot out and allowed more garden space, you know, for them. Because nothing's really done there except the occasional person who parks their car and sleeps overnight. But, but it's a great space and it's, I mean, there's lots of families there all the time, you know, tending to the garden. It's actually a nice thing to see, so to have more of that if possible would be great.
All right, any other comments for staff?
Actually, excuse me, Commissioner Morris, I do have one more. That did make me think of something as we're looking, I don't know if this would come under the, which of these elements, but safe parking has been talked about. I know that sometimes people are reluctant to have that, they think it's great, but not in my neighborhood. But I think it's, you know, rather than having, you know, the people like, we frequently have someone who's sleeping in the car across the street from their, our house. I would rather them have access to a place where there could be a mobile bathroom and mobile showers and services that can come in and help people as well. And I, if, if we don't have that solidly in one or all three of these plans in some form, I think that is something we need to take a really hard look at.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for staff? Did we cover it all? I know you guys have been working hard on this, I know it's, it used to be just the housing element. Now you've got a couple more to, to go through, so. Thanks for your hard work. We want to make sure that we hit the deadlines on those. And that we just continue to be able to do what we're doing without any interference from the state. All right, is there anything else you guys have?
I do not have any other staff communications or announcements at this time. We are hoping to cancel the July sixth meeting. We currently don't have any items slated for that, so look, look out for hopefully a cancellation on that.
Okay, well, great, well, any communication for staff? Glad to be back. You know? Hopefully, they will continue the trend. I think San Diego County is, California's doing a great job. And I think San Diego County is as well, so it's exciting, so, excellent. Well, if there's nothing further, then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Moro, seconded by Commissioner Vaez. Please vote. And our first live meeting is adjourned.